Good evening. We'd like to call this July 28, 2015 Board of School Directors Meeting to order. Please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
By way of announcements, I have a couple executive sessions to report. There was an executive session of the board held on June 28, 2015, for matters of personnel. There was also an executive session of the Human Resources Committee held on July 21, 2015, also for matters of personnel. One other announcement in advance of my taking attendance, there's obviously several board members missing, so we have four board members missing tonight due to conflicts and summer vacation. Obviously, with half the board missing, it's problematic. We do have a quorum, so we are going to proceed, but with four board members missing, we're going to have a somewhat abbreviated agenda tonight, covering only those critical items that we need to approve to keep the district moving forward. We will hold over all other items to the following meeting in August. Those items that we will cover tonight will be approval of board meeting minutes, fiscal items, personnel, curriculum programs, and items under other. While we will take public comment on board action items for tonight, we will defer courtesy of the floor, reports, policy, and any other items before the board until our next meeting, and we'll have a full complement of board members. And with that, by way of attendance...
Yeah, sure. We can discuss that. People come into the board meeting here.
I want to have a board vote on those items.
You have a board? Yeah. There's some parties there.
Okay. Well, we have the right to defer public comment and other items until the next board meeting.
But courtesy of the floor as well.
Yeah.
What is that all about? It's more like you're a taxpayer.
I'm deferring courtesy of the floor until the full board is here.
Why? It's not here on a day. Does he have a floor?
Ladies and gentlemen, I'm deferring courtesy of the floor, reports, policy, and several items until...
That's ridiculous.
Okay. Well, that's what we're going to do.
Have you heard about what's pressing for this year?
I haven't heard about anything.
Exactly. I think so. The summer majority is up here.
Okay. Thank you. By way of attendance, five board members are present. Mr. Roth, Mrs. Barone, Mrs. Woodring, and Mrs. Shackelford are absent, and so I'll now go to public comment on board action items.
Joe Bickelman from Audubon. I have a comment on 9.7, superintendent salary adjustment. It's approving a 2.5% increase salary adjustment for the superintendent. I wanted to know, is that part of his current contract? Or is this over and above what is stated in the contract?
His contract doesn't mandate specific increases, so this is an increase that the board voted to give him based on his...
Based on evaluation?
Mm-hmm.
Now, Mr. White Leather got an 8% increase. He got a $10,000 increase at last month's board meeting, and I didn't understand that because he lost transportation when they shopped out all the drivers, and he lost food service when you shopped out all the food service people. Now, understand, Dr. Zerby relinquished technology to Mr. White Leather and relinquished buildings and grounds, so it seems that the superintendent is getting a lot less of a percentage increase than the business manager or chief financial officer. I don't understand that.
I think both items are matter of personnel, and we gave Dr. Zerby an increase based on performance, and we gave Mr. White Leather an increase based on his promotion.
Oh, that was a promotion?
He's taken on a new role.
But he lost two aspects and gained two aspects, and I just didn't understand why he got $10,000. The 2.5%, how much money is that? 2.5% doesn't do anything for me. It's rather vague. How much money is the increase?
Do you know the exact amount?
4250.
4250? So your salary went from approximately $198,000, $99,000 to $204,000?
No.
No? What's the new salary?
Stuart, do you have that up hand?
$174,000?
Correct.
And you're making $160,000?
That is correct.
Okay. Just want to know who's running the show. Thank you.
Can you repeat what is now going to be a board action item? Just because I know we're only allowed to...
Sure. Board meeting minutes, approval of board meeting minutes, fiscal items, personnel, curriculum, and the two items under other.
You have a quorum, and you're choosing to change the agenda for some reason other than having a quorum. I don't understand that. Maybe it has something to do with a camera in the room or an extra camera in the room. The phrase is courtesy of the floor, so it's like you changed to stiffing of the floor. With regard to one agenda item called field project change orders, without any details, how can we comment on that?
Let me address that. John, let me address that. I apologize for... That was a placeholder. We were in the process of... In the middle of the week, we had a potential change order coming before the board. We were not prepared prior to this meeting to bring a board item for a change order to the board for consideration or for public comment on it. So I apologize, but that is a placeholder. There will be no action item for the board this evening.
Apology accepted. Thank you. But I did want to go on to say that, and it sounds like with Dr. Zerby calling that a placeholder, that during the building projects back in '08 and '09, all the change orders were fully detailed in the agenda. The other aspect of curtailing courtesy of the floor is that there may be other professional staff changes that people would want to comment on now, whereas if people comment at the August meeting, the board will reject whatever is said out of hand. So I think there are a lot of ramifications of eliminating courtesy of the floor, and I think it's imperative that such a change in the agenda should require a board vote. And it wasn't that many...
John, we're not eliminating...
Let me finish. Let me finish, Mr. Nascimento.
No, no.
Let me finish.
You're not talking on a board action item.
Let me finish.
No, John, you're not talking on a board action item.
Yes, I am. I want to. I want to.
We deferred courtesy of the floor. We deferred courtesy of the floor. We didn't eliminate it. This is exactly what we did last year when we had the board retreat, and we deferred courtesy of the floor to a future meeting. So this isn't something that we pull out of air. This has been done before, and this is within the rights of the school board to defer if there's a reason, and we don't feel like having a full complement of board members to hear the public comment is what we want to defer and wait till.
Well, I want to make the comment that it wasn't that many years ago that this board, like many other boards, at the start of the meeting would approve the agenda. That's been eliminated for some reason, and it probably was on for some good reason. So, you know, there's not much interaction between the public and this board.
Here, here.
Okay, John.
You can occasionally have a meeting of the board for, call it a retreat, but we've gone from nominally 24 meetings a year to 12. I hear comments from people about looking at the list of bills, people that have a long day at work on a Tuesday. The public is not provided adequate time. I think I've said enough.
Thank you.
Kim Mulroney, Larsonese, lower Providence. When did you find out that these four board members were not going to be in attendance tonight?
Found out throughout the month.
Okay. When was this agenda released?
Is there a question? Is there a question about board action items?
The question is, if you knew that there was not going to be sufficient board members for you to have courtesy of the floor, it should not be on the official published agenda for this evening.
Andrea Reese, lower Providence. For the record, I agree with, a little disheartened by the courtesy of the floor being canceled as Mr. Andrew Statham stated, there's a quorum here. As Mrs. Larsonese stated, it's on the agenda that was released 24 hours ago, because I keep looking for that agenda to know if I want to speak about something, and I know it's 24 hours before. So as it's called courtesy of the floor, courtesy of the taxpayers would be appreciated. One of the board action items, the 2.5 raise for Dr. Zerby, I do not begrudge that at all. It's an important job, the stay in age, you deserve a raise. I would say two things about that. Please remember the teachers when next year, when you keep that number in mind, the 2.5 number in mind. Also, and I do not mean any disrespect to Dr. Zerby at all, but throughout the last few months, I've heard some problems with communication and response to emails, phone calls, et cetera. So not a huge raise, deserved, I'm sure, but with that, if you could keep in mind to improve your responses, I don't know what constitutes a response and what does not. As a teacher, I am told, please respond to any parent within 24 hours, and if I don't know the answer to the response or I am busy, I am supposed to at least respond by forwarding it to someone who can answer or to say, "I will get back to you as soon as I can." The non-response has been from subjects from A to Z. One parent wrote to you wanting to acknowledge the staff for helping her children when she struggled with breast cancer. No response. One parent asked a simple question about roof repair. No response. Another parent simply asked a question about the nurse situation. No response. So please, if we could just work on that, that would mean a lot. Thank you.
Additional public comment on board action items?
Yeah.
Someone's up already.
Ashley Wilkerson from Audubon. I had some other things I was going to say during courtesy of the floor, and I can't, so I'm going to ask some questions that I wasn't planning to ask since I need to ask about things that are on the agenda, one of them being approval of the minutes, which include the minutes from the special board meeting on June 23. I do not believe those minutes adequately convey the frustration and angst in this community with what has happened with the school consolidations. I would be happy to submit the written comments from parents to add to the minutes so they will adequately convey that message, and I would hope that since we are going to have a truncated meeting tonight, that will allow adequate time for the board members to formulate a response to some of our concerns from that meeting, namely the fact that this was obviously a premeditated closure, that there were discussions about the vote behind the scenes, otherwise, Mr. Nascimento, how...
What was a premeditated closure?
You tell me. You're the one who drafted the press release before the capacity study was even presented, saying there was going to be a unanimous vote to consider closing the school. You tell me how that transpired.
Consideration. How's that a closure? There's a whole process that we get through.
You said there was a unanimous vote. You documented there was going to be a unanimous vote before it happened.
I wrote a draft that said unanimous, which could easily be changed if it wasn't, and also, you know, in advance of the meeting...
Spoken like a true politician, Mr. Nascimento. We'd like that addressed. We'd like to know why there are questions that the board asked in communications with one another that have still not been answered, and yet you were okay with proceeding. We'd like to know when Mr. Sandner, who is on the consolidation committee, said that some of the questions the consolidation committee members themselves had posed had not been addressed. Have those since been addressed, and when will we, the public, receive the answers to those questions?
Okay. If you have that documented, you can submit it.
I will. Thanks.
Thanks. Additional public comment on board action items? Your wife's giving you her time?
Yes, I am.
Yeah. Let's just wait and see if anyone else has anything before we go. Anyone else?
They might have something. Joe Bickelman from Audubon again. I have a question on the lunch prices. You know, the breakfast price is $1.15, and the lunch price is $2.55 for Arrowhead, Audubon, Eagleville, Woodland, and Wersester. Are they the same as last year?
Is that the same price as last year?
See, there's all this key information that would be helpful. It's always conspicuously missing. How much is the breakfast price going up? $1.15?
All prices are 10 cents across the board increase for the '15-'16 school year.
So 10 cents, so that's like, what? 10% of $1.15 is 11 cents, so the breakfast price is going up like, what, 9%? Now, this money goes into the coffers of ARA?
That is not correct.
Where does the money go?
To the Methacton School District.
Has ARA's payment gone up? How do they make money?
ARA charges us based upon the food and labor cost as well as management costs for their operation. Each year, they supply us with a proposal for running our operations each year that's approved by the Department of Food and Nutrition.
So we're increasing the prices 10 cents across the board, so the people that are... The kids that are eating breakfast, that need a healthy breakfast, they're getting an increase of 9%? It just seems like that information should be on here. The prices are going from $1.05 to $1.15. They're going from $2.45 to $2.55 so that people can see the information and the impact on the households of the taxpayers and the students.
Mr. Bickelman?
It's missing.
You're correct. It'll be there next time.
It's missing.
I understand.
Just like a lot of things are missing. And where's the board secretary taking the minutes?
Thank you for your comment.
Where is she or him? I don't even know who it is.
Additional board... Candy?
Are you going to be discussing the jobs?
Candy, can you state your name for this?
Oh, Candy Alphalagaville. The job description, we're discussing this tonight. You're going to delay that till next month.
If they're going to run a better part, they're going to review by the Human Resources.
You have to, right?
Yeah.
I have a couple of questions. I'm just curious. Why are we hiring all these people when we have less students? I mean, we have the supervisor for professional learning who's going to be reporting to the curriculum director. We have a program director who's going to be reporting to you. Mr. White Leather got a nice salary increase and a title change. And the title instructional assistant, I am initiative fact, one of the responsibilities, the first and parable important responsibility of the instructional assistant is to project a positive image of the school district. I think their first responsibility should be assisting the children, and that should be the last responsibility. But your supervisor of professional learning has a 26 responsibilities. I mean, at this point, after sitting in this room as long as I have, maybe we should just have an assistant superintendent to color all these bases instead of hiring more people paying more money, and we have a continuous drop in enrollment. So what... Their responsibility should be less. I mean, I see this in private business. The less business, the less employees, the less money you spend. This should... You need to discuss with the public why we're bringing in people and changing their job titles and giving them nice salaries. I mean, this service is taxpayer, you know, and this might come up next year when it comes time to raise our taxes.
Yeah. We can go through this during the HR piece. Thanks. Additional public comment on board action items?
Brian Urshaw, Lawrence, Robbins. I echo all the other comments tonight. I think the way you panel this meeting was disrespect for the public who spent their time and came out here, so I just wanted to say that. One additional question on the CFO job description, why is not one of the qualifications to hold an accounting or finance degree?
We can go through that when we get to the HR piece. We'll go through that when we discuss that.
Do you think it should be a part of the job description? Yes? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Additional public comment on board action items? Okay. Moving on, I'll ask to board meeting minutes, number eight. I'll ask for a motion to approve the board meeting minutes, the special meeting held on June 23, 2015, and the regular board meeting held on June 25, 2015, as attached. Is there a motion? Mr. Phillips, second. Ms. Hackett, discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor? Opposed? Five to zero. Moving on, item number nine, fiscal items. Mr. White Leather?
Thank you. Couple items on for this evening. First item is the monthly list of bills as provided to Finance Committee on for your approval this evening. Our Treasury, monthly Treasury report, again, as provided to Finance Committee on for your approval. Item 9.3 is the school breakfast and lunch price adjustments as listed in items 1 through 3. Under 9.3 represent a 10 cent across-the-board increase for the '15-'16 fiscal year, has been reviewed and recommended for approval by Finance Committee. The 9.4 reimbursement resolution for technology purchases has been reviewed and approved for, by Finance, for recommendation for approval this evening, as well as our budgetary transfers under item 9.5. Lastly is item 9.7, the adjustment as covered earlier in the meeting, on for your approval this evening. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Any of the board members want to take any of these individually? Okay. Then I'll ask for a motion to approve fiscal items as presented, with the exception of 9.6, which is just a placeholder, not no item to vote on. Is there a motion? Mr. Pellicano, second. Mr. McFarland, discussion? Seeing no discussion. All those in favor? Opposed? Five to zero. Moving on to item 10, personnel items. Mr. Harney?
This evening, we have one resignation professional for your approval. We have one resignation classified. We have five employment professionals this evening. We have one change of status professional. We have one uncompensated leave professional. Two uncompensated leave classifieds. We have three supplemental... Excuse me. Five supplemental contracts for your approval this evening. We have, in addition to our community education instructor staff, we have four job descriptions. The supervisor of professional learning and continuous improvement, chief financial officer, the chief program officer, and the Title I instructional assistant. To make that clear, that's a halftime .5 position that's being paid for through Title I funds, and we have two advisements for your approval.
Thank you, Mr. Harney. I'll take 10.14 separate. Any others that folks want to take separately? Okay. So seeing that, I'll ask for a motion to approve personnel items 10.1 through 10.13 and 10.15. Ms. Hackett, is there a second? Mr. McFarland, discussion? Please.
I just wanted to clarify, the replacements that are listed under 10.3, are those all the result of retirements?
Retirements or resignations. We've got three that were new for the retirements. One of those is a resignation. They're all replacement positions for either a resignation or retirement.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Okay. Seeing none. All those in favor? Five to zero. Item 10.14, Dr. Zerby, want to take us through the job descriptions?
I do. Let's take a look at item number one, approved job description for the Mayo Supervisor of Professional Learning and Continuous Improvement. This position is not a new position. It was an administrative position that was last held by Ms. Bucker, who currently is now elementary principal at Eagleville. Prior to my arrival, that position, once she was assigned to Eagleville, we put a teacher on assignment. So what that means is we interview teachers who are interested in maybe coming into the administrative role, and they get an opportunity while staying in the bargaining unit to take on some administrative responsibilities, specifically professional development. That's what the position was previously titled, Coordinator of Professional Development. And that person was brought into the position and actually remained in that position because of the work that she accomplished for the past two years. We felt that it is time for us to refocus that position, not only to be a position that helps us with providing professional development, not only to our professional staff, but also to our support staff, but also to assist us with helping us with our... Developing our culture of data-driven decision-making. So as you see in the job description, that person's or that position's function is really also designed to help us with organizing and disseminating student performance data to assist our principals and our teachers that had better use information in order to make instructional decisions. So while it's a new title, and there's some new responsibilities, it's not a completely new body or an additional total individual to the organization. So it was a position that was formerly occupied and then occupied for the past two years with a teacher on assignment, and now we're asking the board to approve this job description so that we can formally advertise for this position as a full Act 93 administrative position. Because as we're all aware, the instructional program is really only good as our teachers and the professional development that we provide our teachers. So this is a critical position for the organization, and also it's a critical position in its position with our data-driven decision-making processes. The second item, the job description for the Chief Financial Officer, we have that job description before you. The primary additional responsibilities, as we talked at the last board meeting, and I laid out the concept behind the Chief Financial Officer and the Chief Program Officer, was to really do two things. One, to act as a leadership and supervisory role within the district, as well as assist me and take some things off my plate so that I can attend to matters of the board, as well as matters within the public, and certainly keep an eye out on what's important for the Methacton School District in the long term. So among many other items, as I previously explained. But the Chief Financial Officer is just that. It's the position that assumes leadership within the school district for not only the financial aspects and the business aspects, but also for the additional operational aspects of the district, including transportation, food services, technology, and facilities. The next job description is for the position of Chief Program Officer. Now, this is a completely new position. So for the comments from the audience earlier, this is one of two new positions that are actually on this list. The second new position is number four, and I'll speak to that in just a minute. But this position is really similar to one might see as an assistant superintendent, because really an individual that can take and assist not only the superintendent with matters, but also assist our curriculum department. I think the key was clearly articulated at the last meeting that our organizational structure is one that has more bodies on the operational side than it does on the curriculum and instruction side, and I really... And I really feel that while Ms. Katona is doing a great job for the district, we need to bolster up that particular aspect so that we can develop new programs and services for our children, lead a STEM initiative, and do many other things that we believe as our parents and our students and our faculty and staff and our administration and our board believe that we need to do as a district here in Methacton, for this community and for our children long term. So this is really a position that's going to be able to take things and help us take it to the next level, but be a leader in curriculum along with Ms. Katona. The fourth position that I have outlined here is a master's position, and it's entitled Title I Instructional Assistant. This position is really designed to do, basically instructional assistant work, but it's titled the way that it is because it's being funded under the Title I program. It's our recommendation that once this job description is approved and the position is approved, that, you know, we go through the normal hiring processes, that we will bring forward to the board a part-time individual, and that's the amount of money that we have, and likely that position will be in Eagleville to support the Title I initiatives in that particular building. So in all, there are four positions. I explained the first, or it's number two and number three at the last meeting. The first one is really a reemphasis and a refocus of an existing position, and the last one is a new position that we paid out of Title I or federal funds to help assist our most needed students.
Thank you. So what I'll ask for a motion in a second, and then we can have a discussion to that point. Is there a motion to approve the job descriptions as listed under item 10.14? Ms. Hackett, is there a second? Mr. Phillips, discussion? Mr. Pellicano?
I just want to, I had a question about the CFO job description. And a member of the public had brought it up. Normally, you would see, not in all cases, but in many cases, some reference to accounting or finance background. It's not necessarily always a requirement, nor I'm saying that it should be in this particular case, but it should say, typically, we say something like that, or commensurate experience, something along those lines. I wasn't available to talk to any of the HR committee members to understand that, but normally, you would say something like that, because you would think that that would be the typical type of background. So, you know, in this particular case, you know, Mr. Whiteleather has a commensurate experience, but, you know, is that something that we would consider putting something like that in there?
Do you not think an MBA covers that?
Well, it depends on what the overall background, I don't know what the undergraduate degree, but again, as long as it's commensurate experience, it satisfies it. But normally, an MBA, depending, it could be an MBA with concentration in marketing. I mean, I don't know what that, you know, what is the concentration?
Finance.
Finance, so that's perfect then. But typically, I think if it's a chief financial officer, I would say some type of accounting or finance background. That was my only comment, because I didn't know what the MBA was. Mine was in management information systems, and if I just put MBA, no people know that, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
Is there, I mean, is there validation from the board then to make any adjustments? I mean, I understand what you're saying. What it does is, we can certainly make, you can make any job description as specific as you may want, but what it does is, it could eliminate candidates in the future, even though we have this position technically filled at this point.
Well, I think that's why he says commensurate.
Or commensurate experience. I mean, that's typically what you see in a CFO position. That's the only reason I think I would add that in there. Again, there's no question about qualifications, it was more just a suggestion in the wording.
I would agree with that, that it should be identified at, or commensurate experience. I know you're very heavily talking about school, business, administration, which typically is the chief financial person, even if they don't have the CFO title, but it would make sense to have that included as a requirement, counting back.
So I think we can add that caveat to the approval, or we can approve it as is and ask the HR committee to come back on the recommendation.
I'm fine with that.
Either way is fine with me.
I'm fine with that.
What, you're coming back?
Whatever's easiest for you, just prove it as is.
Well, we can prove it as is, and then we can ask the HR committee to
Make a change.
to take a look at it and make any necessary changes. Okay. Additional discussion on any of the four job descriptions? Yeah, Mr. McFarland?
Just staying on that qualification, on the first position, the master's degree is required, but there's no specialty identified with regard to what that degree is in? Is that how we wanted to leave that? This is on the professional learning and continuous improvement. It says master's degree, but does not say with any degree of specialty.
It doesn't say that.
Should it?
I think, again, it does allow the flexibility of the administration and the board to consider the experience and the degrees that come before, as the, as the interview process unfolds. I mean, we certainly are, we're going to be considering master's degrees that are more in line with this particular piece, but we might have teachers within the district that have a master's degree in something that is in a particular curricular area, and if we start listing all different areas, we may exclude one area that we could, so we could eventually lose a candidate on. So I believe that this allows us to say, these are the minimum qualifications for the position. We certainly, as an organization, can choose to seek greater individuals, but this is certainly the minimum acceptable for such a position.
So the two certifications, principal and curriculum instruction, are of sufficient depth to provide that kind of knowledge at that position?
I believe it is, yes.
Just one other thing on this particular job. When this position was in existence two years ago, to whom did that report then?
Do you remember, Mr.?
Actually, I believe it was the superintendent.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Other discussion? Okay, we have a motion in a second to approve the job descriptions as
I'm sorry, before, may I?
Yeah, good.
I just want to be clear on what we're voting on. We're voting to approve these job descriptions. There are no salaries at this point and no hiring process in place at this point. We're just
Other than the CFOs on staff?
Other than the CFOs.
The other ones have not, they're not.
Okay, thank you.
Other discussion? Okay, motion in a second to approve the job descriptions as presented in 10.14. If there's no further discussion, I'll ask for a vote. All those in favor? Opposed? Five to zero. And we'll ask HR to go back and look at the language around the CFO position. Moving on to item 11, curriculum and programs. Ms. Katona?
This evening, you have on the agenda two textbooks available for review. You did already approve textbooks a few months ago, however, this was something unique that came to our attention when we went to put, right before we put in a PO for the one book that had been approved. So first of all, we are looking to have available for review the Spanish textbooks, A C de Cisay Level 3 and Level 4. You have the numbers and the costs there in front of you. We would have these available for review over the next month. And just to give you a little background on why this is on here again at this point, again, before we put in the purchase order for the Spanish 3 text, which had been approved, the publisher contacted us to say that the online component of the 2016 edition was going to go in-house, and as a result, the unit price of the textbooks were being decreased. As a result, the unit price is actually lower than what was originally approved for the 2012 edition, and that was just for Spanish 3. So previously, Spanish 4 was slated to be approved for 1617. However, if we were to purchase both texts for 1516, we could have all of the Spanish textbooks updated this year, and we would actually be still coming in at a lesser cost than what we would have been paying just for the Spanish 3 this year for the 2012 edition. So it seems kind of crazy that that would actually happen, but that's how it would be. So right now, I just wanted to put before you that we'd like to put the textbooks out, and then at the August meeting, we would ask for your approval on those.
Thank you. We're going to defer on item 12 for the next board meeting, and 13, other, Dr. Zerber?
Thank you. Gifts and donations, we accept a gift of $382 from Widows Club Lunch Bunch at Lower Providence Presbyterian Church, as listed there. 13.2 PSBA voting delegates, approve the appointments of Christian Nascimento, Gregory Pellicano, and Brenda Hackett as voting delegates to participate in the 2015 PSBA Delegate Assembly to be held on Tuesday, October 13th, 2015. And if I may, I know this is not an agenda item, but I just want to give the public and the board an update on the field construction project, if I may. There was an update distributed to the Methacton families in July on the status of the Methacton High School Fields renovation project in this update, which was part of the district newsletter. I informed readers of the adjusted substantial completion timeline for the various aspects of the project, with the auxiliary field to be substantially completed August 7th, with the stadium field August 15th, stadium track August 31st, seating and siding of the softball field by September 7th, and the stadium restroom completed by September 21. This is, these dates are different from the original substantial completion of August 7th for all those items. And in my newsletter, I basically explained the rationale behind weather and other delays that has made us change the schedule. However, our intent is, as that communication stated, our intent is to have the auxiliary field ready for practice and play first. This allows for multiple sports and the band to utilize the area while the stadium field is completed the following week. It also allows the track surface to cure and for additional two weeks. This means that the stadium field will not be accessible for use until the stadium track surface, which surrounds the field, is cured. This access is planned for approximately August 31st. While the July update shows pictures and describes our progress to date, we have since started installation of the poles for fencing, laying stone for the synthetic turf, running conduit for the auxiliary field, and pouring concrete for field borders and stadium bathroom. With much excitement, I just want to tell the board that I was also informed that synthetic turf is scheduled for installation next week on the auxiliary field. In other field construction news, please note that we have that placeholder on the agenda, which I made you aware of. We will likely have some additional change orders as soon as we reconcile pricing relative to those items. We'll likely bring those forward to you in August. In addition, we are in the process of organizing some events around the anticipated completion of the project to raise funds and to re-energize the community. While we have encountered some unusual events along the path to this destination, I just want to reemphasize that this is a good thing for the district. This is a good thing for our community, and as such, I want to, again, thank all of our contributors. I want to thank all the students, both past and current, and their families for their cooperation and patience during this process. And I want to thank our community and the members of the school board directors for their leadership on this and their contribution to bringing the project forward in a fiscally appropriate manner. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anything, so there's nothing to vote on there?
No, no vote. No item to vote on.
Anything else, and you've already gone through gifts and donations and voting delegates. So anyone want to take either of these separately or take them all at once? Okay, so I'll ask for a motion to approve items 13.1 and 13.2 as presented. Mr. Phillips, is there a second? Mr. Pellicano? Any discussion? All those in favor? Five to zero. Item 14, note the dates for the board members' calendar, and we will defer items 15, 16, and 17 until the next board meeting on August 25th. May I have a motion to adjourn?
Resusturating.
Adjourn. Yeah. Motion, Mr. Phillips, is there a second? Mr. Pellicano, all in favor? Five to zero. We stand adjourned until August 25th.